Item 10, Conduct of Business. Item A is receive an oral report on upcoming street closures and work activities associated with the Caltrain grade separation project.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm Mark Simon, Executive Officer, Public Affairs for Caltrain. It's good to see you all again. I'm going to do some brief introductory remarks and then the people who actually know what they're talking about will make the presentation. More than five years, it has been one of my principal responsibilities to address the issue of fatalities and suicides on behalf of the public on the Caltrain right-of-way. As I've told my boss more than once, it's not what I thought I signed up for. It's a very difficult responsibility. Every fatality sends a shudder through our organization, starting with the onboard personnel and the first responders. Frankly, all of us feel pain about these things. The Manetta Transportation Institute at San Jose State, a year ago, did a study on all of the fatalities on the Caltrain right-of-way. What they were looking for was a pattern. Is there some place, or some time, or some day that we can look at and realize that that's a day, or a time, or a place for heightened awareness and additional vigilance? The sad news is, there is no pattern, even including gender and age. It is simply something that affects the entire right-of-way and affects a broad range of people. The good news in the report is that most, if not all, of the fatalities that occur on the Caltrain right-of-way occur within a half-mile or less of a grade crossing. Well, that makes sense. That's how people access the right-of-way. We fenced off a vast majority of the rest of it. So there's only really two ways to stop these kinds of incidents, which is to stop running trains, which I'm not here to advocate tonight, or to build a grade separation. And so with that prelude, I want to thank this council for its decision to do this on behalf of all of us at Caltrain, who spend our days worrying and having to deal with these things. It's a huge step. It's huge in cost, it's huge in scope, and it's huge in its impact, and its disruption, and its inconvenience to the people of your community. So we're here to thank you for that. We're here to update the council, obviously, on what we're doing. But we wanted to begin by specifically thanking the residents of San Bruno for their patience and tolerance and forbearance. And again, this council for taking this step. We had a community meeting last night. Thank you to the mayor and to your colleagues for coming to the meeting last night. We thought it was eminently successful in terms of the number of people who came, the kinds of information we were able to distribute as we begin what may be the most critical part of this whole project. So thank you for participating. Thank you for what you said. We are entering, as I said, a critical phase of construction and probably the most disruptive. We'll do the best we can to keep you informed and to keep your constituents informed. We want to do an extraordinary job at informing the public about what's going on, and you deserve nothing less. And by the way, your city staff has done an extraordinary job of keeping our feet at the fire, to make sure that we're responsive, that we're responsive quickly and effectively. They are zealous advocates for the people you represent. So I do want to introduce a few people, some of whom you know. Bevan Dufty is currently our interim manager for community relations. You replaced Todd McIntyre, some of you may recall. Todd got a job with the Federal Railroad Administration, moved to Washington, DC. He said he likes the summer weather. So that obviously means he wasn't going to fit in summers in San Bruno. Christopher Dokamos, many of you know, is our community relations associate, who has been working on this project since we began. And then Rafael Boland, who you all know, is here to describe the next steps. And we're more than happy to answer any questions once you have them, especially if you can accept "I don't know" as an answer from me. Without any further ado, I have Rafael go up and make the presentation. Thank you.
So what you're going to see tonight is a shorter, more pointed version of what was presented to the community last night. So what I'm going to talk about today is, I'm briefly going to go over the project goals, but what I'm really going to focus on is the next six months, which is, we've been talking about this for some time now, how a required portion of this project would involve switching from the current tracks to the shoe fly, and that that would involve disruption to the community. And so we're here to focus on that at this point. So the project goals, as always, the number-one goal of this project is to enhance safety. And to do so, by removing three key at-grade crossings in the community. Other improvements will be to improve access to the school, as well as Lyons Field, to reduce some of the dwell times of automobiles, which will remove some congestion, as well as some pollution associated with that, and then also to assist the city of San Bruno in its revitalization efforts for that corridor. So schedule for upcoming, through October, activity focused on the temporary station, and most construction activities were geared towards that. Now that that's been completed, the shoe fly, that allowed us to start construction on the shoe fly. And the next critical point, obviously, is this weekend when we cut over from the mainline tracks to the shoe fly, which will allow us to remove the existing tracks, and then that'll open up a whole slew of activity associated with the piling and the MSC wall, et cetera. So I'm going to focus on the next six months, which is really when this activity will happen, and really, the next week in particular. So the first major impact that the community is going to notice is that train traffic that is currently traveling on the two mainline tracks will shift immediately to the east, approximately 20 to 20 and a half feet from the existing tracks, closer to Montgomery and First Avenue. And obviously, those individuals who are living on First Avenue or in the environs, as well as Montgomery, will notice, it'll be louder, and they'll notice train traffic will be more noticeable, obviously, than it has in the past. So this figure on the top would be 101. El Camino is off on the bottom, north is to the left-hand side. So essentially, what you see in this slide is, this is what the tracks will look like at the end of this weekend. So, well, once the mainline tracks are there. But if you can pretend the mainline tracks are still there, that's what the train traffic will look like at the end of this weekend. So everything will have shifted over immediately to the east. So what that means is that each one of San Bruno, San Mateo, and Angus, the crossings will have to shift over. And I'll go through that in a minute. So in order to do this, we need to shut down all three crossings. Now, as we discussed previously, we're not going to shut down all three crossings for the entire time. We're going to prioritize San Bruno as the busiest crossing and with the access to the freeway. So what I'll do is, I'll just kind of go through day by day, and from there, we can see how the community will be most affected. So the first closure will occur on Angus, and that will be Wednesday at 8:00 PM. So from 8:00 PM Wednesday through Friday at 11 o'clock, only Angus will be closed. So the detour for vehicles wishing to go east and west is they go up to San Mateo, San Bruno. So that's a relatively easy one, and it'll be signed accordingly. We've also spoken with the principal and with the school about detours for individuals dropping off kids in the morning. The next phase of the detour, the main phase of the detour, will start at 11 o'clock Friday night. So Friday night, 11 o'clock, remember Angus is still closed, San Mateo and San Bruno will also be closed. So from 11 o'clock to 4:00 AM Sunday, so basically for Saturday, the whole day, all three crossings will be closed. So the detour for vehicles, once again, trying to go east or west, they will be signed to go up to Scott. The exception of that will be for larger vehicles, obviously. We do not suggest they go at Scott. We'll have a flagger there. We'll also have signs that say oversized vehicles go up to South Linden. But we'll have someone there to ensure that that happens. So that's Saturday to 4:00 AM Sunday. Then the remainder of Sunday till 4:00 AM Monday, San Mateo is closed, and the detour is up San Bruno. So if on Sunday you want to take San Mateo, you'll be directed to San Bruno. Then 4:00 AM on Monday morning, in time for the commute, San Mateo will be open. So Angus, as you recall, is still closed, and will remain closed until 4:00 AM that Wednesday. So total durations, you're looking at a six-day for Angus. I should also point out that one of those days is a holiday for the school, so it's actually a little bit better than it looks. And then San Bruno, you're really looking at Saturday. San Mateo, you're looking at the whole weekend. The other thing I'd like to mention is that we've looked very carefully at public safety concerns during the interim, in particular for that Saturday. And I'd like to ask Chief Toffert to maybe speak a little bit more on that.
Thanks, Rafael. Police and fire departments have taken steps to ensure the continuity of public safety services during the time of the closures. All mutual aid resources, including police, fire, ambulance, have been made aware of the road closures, and the detour routes available with the most expeditious route has been conveyed to those agencies. Police and fire resources will be stationed and assigned in the Bel Air neighborhood during the time that all three roadways are closed. We anticipate that Caltrain will have a lane available for emergency vehicle access to San Bruno Avenue sometime around Saturday afternoon. But up until that time, we'll have officers and an engine company assigned to the Bel Air neighborhood. In addition, we'll have our officers monitoring traffic conditions during the road closures, and we will bring in our traffic officer to assist during the peak time, and I suspect that's going to be Saturday during the morning and afternoon commute hours. All of our police and fire supervisors are aware of these contingency plans, and they're also aware that our concern, as well as yours, is to maintain public safety response and response times in this area during the road closures.
So in brief, this is a copy of the detour map that many of you will have seen. It was mailed out to the residents. And essentially, it's a simplified version of what I just described. So during, and it focuses really on the most impact, which is the weekend. So once again, San Bruno, San Mateo, traffic will be routed up to Scott, or for larger vehicles to South Linden. And then just one other thing I'd like to mention, for pedestrians, the detour is slightly different than I described. Everything I said is accurate. The only difference is that pedestrians have one other access point, and that is at the existing Caltrain station. So for individuals who are on Huntington or First Avenue in that area, if they're south of Angus, they'd be directed to the temp station. If they're in that northern area, then they would go up to San Mateo, San Bruno, until, except for Saturday, when everything's closed, in which case the crossings are, once again, at the temp station, which I've got a shot of. There's the temp station crossing out at the, near the BART daylight structure. And the other crossing will be to the north at Scott or South Linden. So this slide shows a little of what the detour is going to look like, and the reason I wanted to highlight this is that San Bruno alignment will look a little different when San Bruno comes online on Sunday than it does today. So what we're going to do is, we'll have flaggers on there for a few hours extra to direct people, just so they're aware that things have changed. But the concept here, and this leads to my next point on piling, is, as you recall, when we're doing construction in the center of San Bruno, we direct traffic around it. When we're working, obviously, on the outsides, we run through the conventional San Bruno alignment. So pile driving, which is the next main activity after we start removing existing tracks, is going to start towards the end of January into February. And once again, this is an activity that we've been telling the community is coming, but it's here. And obviously, there's going to be impacts, and there's going to be noise. That's the bad news. The good news is, we've limited the operating hours from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM only. And the other thing I'd like to mention is that we're anticipating a production rate of about two piles an hour. Obviously, it's not a straight divide by two, because there's set of times, et cetera, that go into that. The piles are broken up into groups. There's essentially three groups of piles, if you will, at San Bruno and at San Mateo each, and two in Angus. So each time, there'll be a little bit of settlement. And I'd like to also mention at this time that, this was mentioned during the public meeting yesterday, but for individuals who are concerned about vibration and their concern about possible damage to their property, what we're suggesting is, at this time, it would be probably to their advantage to contact Bill Carlson, who's RRE and, right there in Row 2, and set up for some photographs to be taken with both parties, so it's date-stamped, and everybody knows what the before condition looks like, and it just works for everybody's best interest to do so. So this is, the next slide just shows, once the piling's in, the very next main activity will be excavation. Once we've excavated out for lightweight, we'll start going up in the air, and you'll actually start to see something a little more constructive appear. So here you see abutments, you see a little bit of the pedestrian crossing beginning to be constructed, and the beginnings of the wall. Here, the bridges come in, and there's the completed station with all the amenities, posing park, et cetera. Here's a shot of the finished platform. Here's the, I'm sure you contact info for our public outreach. And I'll take any questions you have at this time.
To the chair. Rafael, thank you. I came a little late last night, and so, can you just sort of, hopefully you can do it briefly, but why, why does it have to be shut down for 29 hours? I mean, are we, are you depressing, depressing part of the roadway? Is it, I'm just, my first reaction was, I was concerned that, what if there was something that really needed, that a few minutes, a few minutes of a detour, you know, couldn't be afforded, and, you know, and Engine 51 needed to just barrel through your construction, you know, to get to the other side? I mean, what is preventing them from doing that? What, I mean, is there, you know, a major setup that you have to do that prevents them from, you know, from crossing, from any type of crossing?
So, yeah, so very good question. So the first part of your question is sort of, why are we, why are we doing this in one dramatic sweep, and sort of, sort of, in a less evasive manner? And the reason is, because we have to do this. We have to run trains either on a shoe fly or on the main track. The problem is that the shoe fly is significantly lower in elevation than the mainline track. So if you were to approach it right now, now, right now, the shoe fly's actually constructed underneath, it's just, we just buried it. But if we were to remove that today and expect vehicles to go over it, it's not the train part that's a problem, it's the vehicles, because they'd be hitting that hump. And there's just not enough room between the old tracks and the new tracks to actually affect that quick arise. So the second half of your question, I guess, is, if you're a fire truck, and there's a fire going on at Melody Toyota, and you don't care about your suspension, what's preventing you from doing that? And one thing I didn't, I deliberately didn't mention during the public meeting, because it's really a concern that we've talked about with fire and police in the city quite a bit, is, in addition to prioritizing San Bruno for the general public at the 4:00 AM time, we actually have an additional milestone to get San Bruno open only to emergency vehicles, to do exactly what you said. And I think the words I've used from the beginning is, it's not going to be pretty, but we will get you over it. So the prioritization there is actually San Bruno to emergency vehicles for early that afternoon of Saturday. So there's still a gap between 11 o'clock that night, and I think that's where the chief spoke about having vehicles staged on the, on the other side of the tracks to sort of act as a measure there. But, but that's definitely something we looked at, and you're absolutely right. I mean, in an emergency situation, it may not be open for the general public, it may not have paving or marking or what have you, but we will prioritize emergency vehicles.
And one of the residents asked me is, because I sat on First Avenue, and I, you know, you see that, you see the new barricade, and you see the new fence, and it was dark, but, you know, those tracks are right there now. Are the trains going to slow down at all as they come through? I mean, if you sit there, and you see the regular trains coming through that are not going to stop in San Bruno, they're coming through pretty quick. I mean, and just to imagine these trains 20 feet closer.
So, I mean...
I mean, does it make any difference? I mean, is it, I mean, what, I guess, the residents on First Avenue are going to be impacted the most, because...
It's right there.
It's right there.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, nothing I'm going to say, nothing I'm going to say is going to take away from that, because absolutely, it is going to be an impact. I mean, they're definitely going to be affected by this. The trains do get slightly slower than what they're running now, but slightly slower is still fast. So they are going to experience trains going through there. So it's not as bad as if they were running through. And I think what you were talking about is the four trains we run express in particular, because most of the trains do stop at the station, so it's not quite as bad, because you're, you're accelerating up from...
Right, right.
...from the station, or you're coming to a stop by the turn signal first. But for those four trains a day...
Okay, so that's, that sounds better, because it's, I'm more than concerned about the northbound, northbound trains, because they're, that's right along, alongside the road there.
Yeah, you're, you're absolutely right. The northbound's the worst case, because it's closest. Right? And...
So my last question is that, you showed a number of 361 piles.
Yes.
Last night, the number, the figure was like 600.
Yeah, I, I went back and counted them, and I think...
You just reduced the project?
No. So it has to do with the way the project was staged. If you recall, we always staged this in such a manner that it didn't preclude high speed. So the original concept was, we wanted to drive all of the piling, and that's, that's, the discrepancy is roughly 100% discrepancy, and that's exactly why it's, because half the piles that were being referred to were high-speed piles, if you will, and half of them are the ones that we're actually driving right now. So that's, that's where the difference in that number, does that answer your question?
How many piles are you going to drive?
361.
That's fine. Okay. Thank you.
Through the chair. Real quick, you discussed that you sent out a map to try to...
Yes.
...inform everyone. What radius did you send it to within that, within the community affected? Or those on both sides of the tracks in addition? Did we have it just in one language? Was there multiple language?
I can answer some of that, and if you want to take it, or... Okay, well...
Bevan Dufty, good evening, councilman and councilmembers and mayor. We mailed to a quarter-mile radius, which is traditionally what we have done. We are going to expand that universe, and we're going to have another mailing go out in about 10 days, which will go to a half-mile radius. And it was in Spanish and English, it was bilingual. And the community meeting we had last night was translated, and the PowerPoint was translated into Spanish as well. So we're very committed, and we had an excellent turnout. The principal at Bel Air, Michael Rothhammer, has an excellent relationship with the families, and there were many families and kids that came last night. And the school has been really engaged in this process, and I think very happy. They've got 100 preschool families and 430 elementary school families, and so each of those had a flyer go home, and a recorded message from the principal went to them. So we really have focused on the school, because with Angus being closed the longest, we know they're going to feel the most impact.
Thank you.
Through the chair. I have a question about the photography. Could you elaborate a little bit about it? What is it that you're asking people to do, and how far back should they be concerned about it? Is it just first? Is it first and second? Is it what?
Well, I mean, we're certainly not directing anybody to do this if this is not something they're comfortable with. The only thought was that, in the event that somebody feels nervous about their stucco finish, or their footing, what have you, the smartest thing they can do at this point is, so there's no disputing it after the fact, is to get not just a timestamped photograph, but one in conjunction with our CM team, our construction management team, so both parties have access to the same photo. And no one's saying this, this is even going to come up, but it's better to have it if someone's even thinking that. So it certainly opens to anybody who's concerned about it. I wouldn't, I mean, we did a noise and vibration study on the project. We don't believe it's an issue. Our vibration levels are below the threshold for structural damage, for cracking, anything of that nature. But we're simply just trying to preempt the concerns that somebody might have. And it's just, it doesn't make any sense two years from now to say, yeah, that crack wasn't there, and, you know, what's a lawyer going to do with that?
Yes, I agree with you. I'm, I'm asking, is any, how far back should people be concerned? Like, some people don't live there, some people may be...
Right.
...you know, landlords and not have direct access to what the information that you're giving us.
Right. Well, I, the simple answer is, I don't think anybody should be concerned. Even the people at First Avenue, like I said, we did look at the residences closest to the affected area. We looked at the vibration, and we think we're well within the limits.
Okay, thank you.
Michael. Yes, I'm a little confused about the pilings now, because I, it was my understanding that we were building the platform to accommodate high-speed rail, whether or not it comes. If we're only putting in half as many pilings, what happens if high-speed rail does become part of the project? Are we then going to have to drive more piles?
We, if, excuse me, so you're saying, well, actually, can you pop that? I'll answer that with a picture, it'll make more sense. So just a clarification on your first point. So the project was designed to not preclude high speed. So what that means is, the first two tracks, the ones you see on the screen there, are the tracks that are going to be built right now. At the completion of those two raised grade separated tracks, that's the decision point for high speed, right? So if high speed comes on board at that point, then the station you see before you would not get constructed. Instead, what happens is, you come back with another two tracks, and you end up with a station that, that looks a little different than that. So it's not 100%, there, there is a decision point, where there's a point of no return, where if you construct the second platform, you are looking at demolition. So to answer your question, if a year down the line, we discover that high speed is ready, willing, and able to answer your question, yes, you would have to drive piles. So the answer, I just gave about 361, would go right back to...
So it'd be another two months of pile driving sometime in the future to accommodate the second set of tracks?
Well, possibly. I mean, the, that's sort of a worst-case scenario. The reality is, where high speed is at this point, and I don't want to speak for high speed, but we don't really know, if anything, we know less about their design now than we did two years ago when we designed this. So as a worst-case scenario, I would say yes to that question.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just add one thing. We did take note of the comments by the prior speaker, his concerns about the flow of traffic, and we'll figure out if the issue is, is, we'll look into it, see if there's anything we need to do to change the patterns there.
Okay. One more question to Rafael. Getting into pile driving, considering the proximity to the BART box, do you expect any disruption to BART at all?
No, not at all. So two parts to that answer. One is, we're going to pre-drill the piles that are, that would have the potential to impact the BART box. Obviously, BART requested that, and it's the simplest solution, because it simply avoids any possibility that we could affect the box. The second part of that is, as part of the specifications for the contract, we've also put in requirements that the contractor perform monitoring of the existing BART facilities anytime we work within it. And it's kind of the same as with the residences, right? I mean, we're going to document, 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 and then monitor during the construction.
All right, thank you. Any other questions by council? Mr. Lubke?
I'm Alan Lubke. I live on Fleetwood Drive. I'm the president of the San Bruno Citizens for Good Signage. Earlier this evening, Mr. Lubke presented a request for a agenda item on the, on the council, on the agenda, for automobile traffic in this area. And in order for the people concerned to be able to plan for the timing of their assessment, could you go over that slide once again, just before the piling slide, where you show that there's a, there's a, there's a difference in the flow of traffic on San Bruno Avenue as it crosses the railroad tracks, and then, that's not the slide. And then explain and say when, when that will be completed, because I'm sure they'll want to, the staff will want to evaluate the traffic after that new traffic flow is in, in place.
I'm not sure I understand.
Like, the donut shape, when the, after the weekend, it's going to be wrapping around the center of the abutment?
Just before the piling slide, you showed some...
Yeah, so the purpose of this is to allow work to occur in the center of existing San Bruno. So San Mateo and Angus, both streets move from their current alignment. So what that allows us to do is, when we're working in existing San Mateo, we run traffic on new San Mateo, and we're working on new San Mateo, we swap. San Bruno is a special case, because San Bruno doesn't move. So what this detour, it's really geared towards the pile driving, and some of the bridge abutment work that has to take place in the middle of the road. So you're looking at... So you're looking at anywhere from six to eight weeks of on-and-off traffic doing that, and then it'll return to its existing configuration.
68 weeks, that's a 68 weeks after the pile driving?
No, to allow the pile driving.
To allow the pile driving?
Correct.
Oh, okay, so...
Piling and some of the work in the middle is...
So then the time, the time then for staff to, to look at the normal, regular flow of traffic and the problems associated with that would be after the pile driving would be completed? Or, or, or before? Look at it now. All right, let's look at it now.
And what will also happen, right now, there's one lane...
We, we, we need you to speak at the podium.
Thank you. Right now, San Bruno Avenue has been reduced to one lane in each direction. Come Monday morning, it's going to go back to two lanes in each direction. So that's going to increase the flow that's able to go through the intersection of San Mateo and Huntington. So it's going to go back to the way it used to be with two lanes in each direction. So that'll help the, the problem with some of the traffic.
It will help, but, but it still wouldn't eliminate the problems on Huntington, for example.
Well, I guess...
Well, anyway, my, my, my request still stands.
All right, thank you. Mr. Rico?
Robert Rico, Seventh Avenue. The, one of the last slides gave a phone number and a, a name, I believe, to contact, to contact Caltrain. I'm assuming that's Monday to Friday, nine to, nine to five. If a resident on First or Second Avenue, or somebody down there at 10 or 11 o'clock at night has a concern, and they just need to bitch or complain or something, can we get, can we, the residents of the Bel Air, get a phone number and a name of somebody that we can call after hours or before hours from...
We're going to find out right now. I'm going to give you Rico's phone number.
Robert's been incredibly helpful, let me tell you. He's an asset in this process. He's been tremendously helpful. My cell phone number is on both, and on my, on my machine and voicemail, and on this one, and it's 415-595-3213, and I'm happy to have anyone call me.
You said that really quick.
Sorry.
I need to write that down in case I got a call.
And I'm happy to have anyone call me.
Thank you very much. All right, any other questions or comments on this update?
Well, my colleague was whispering in my ear here, and...
Sweet nothings.
Yes. We can make suggestions, and I know this is going to be really painful for about 30 hours or so, but if we can notify vehicular traffic before they even get there, because our, it's been our experience that there's been no forewarning. I mean, we already know, and sometimes we cuss at ourselves for saying, why didn't we detour? We knew, we all know that there is construction there. So possibly when you're getting off the freeway, or maybe even before, you know, so that maybe they can, you know, take, you know, take another detour, go South Airport or something, you know, instead of, you know, to bypass going down San Bruno Avenue. And then maybe right, right at El Camino, or right on El Camino and San Bruno Avenue. That might, you know, that might alleviate some of the issues. Is that something we...
Rafael?
Yeah, I can address that. Yeah, thank you. No, that, that's a very good point. I agree. Once, once you're in San Bruno Huntington area, the damage has already been done. So our goal, obviously, is for non-residents, to the extent possible, we want to keep them on El Camino to 380 and access the freeway that way. Towards that end, we've got, I believe, six CMSs that we've set up at various points at El Camino, further up San Bruno when you get off of the freeway, and also as you get closer, that identify that there's, there's a traffic issue up ahead and direct people to avoid it.
And then my, my last comment is, always, still always with the residents, and so I know the majority of the work is within the right-of-way. And I know, you know, some of the residents were most vocal, some of the business owners and residents were most vocal when there was work outside of the right-of-way, say along, in the streets and things, you know, shifting utilities and things. Do you anticipate over the next, I mean, is that something that you will be able to communicate to the residents and to us, to the city, that that type of work is being planned, say along First Avenue and along San Mateo Avenue? In, in the, in the, in the street right-of-way?
Yes, absolutely, we can. And that's something that, as you know, we've worked together on to, to provide for more focused notifications. So we, we send out these sort of overall mailers for big events like this. It's not practical to do that every time we have a light plan out there at first in Angus, but we understand that for four or five houses, that's a huge deal when something like that is, is present. So what we've moved towards is, for big events like this, we, we keep all the same kind of outreach tools, but what we've added to that is, is door hangers, and we'll go and actually physically hang a personalized message that says, activity between X and Y of this type, you know, just to give people the heads up that there will be work, to the extent possible. Obviously, we try to avoid doing it at night, but where we don't have a choice, we like to let people know.
No, no, the residents are actually, I mean, they, they are very receptive, and they know what, they know that they're at ground zero, they know that everything is happening, they just don't want to be surprised.
Right.
You know, and if you can work it out, that, you know, someone questioned, how come you don't do more work on weekends?
Right.
I mean, work on weekends so that we can get sleep at night or something, so. Those are the sort of things that, you know, you know, as the last year of this project goes on, that maybe we can, you know, consider.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. This, in fact, we, this is sort of where the shovel really hits the dirt, and hopefully we're all going to be a lot better off for this. We've been working with you on this for quite a number of years, and we're looking forward to this. I know it's a big imposition for, especially our residents, and it's, it's a rough time, but the next, you know, five or six months, we're going to see a huge improvement.
Thank you. Thank you for the chance to come and talk to you.
All right, thank you, and welcome, Bevan. Thank you.